Oh, that's, oh, that's what we're talking, okay.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay, I have six o'clock. If everyone would please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Christie, could you take roll call, please?
Sure. Cretelli.
Present.
Pappenforth.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Fontana.
Here.
Nakarato.
Absinthe.
Martin.
Here.
Mayor Shore.
Here.
Acquorum is present.
Great, and that takes us to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on that this evening?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say I'm be recusing myself of any voting or decisions made on the consent agenda over specifically for the Fibark Community Center.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I appreciate it.
I had a, I had a question about, I saw a comment or bit of information about the carnival coming back. Got really excited. What is that, is it, is that like, like how we remember it, or is it a...
I don't know. I'm not in charge of the carnival.
Oh, okay.
And neither is Diesel, but he's gonna come up and talk about it.
I'm not in charge, but I represent. I met a carnival guy. No, more like the carnival last year.
Oh, okay.
Slides, kids' rides, everything but the pink elephants, which are missing, and probably in Mexico.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, little kids. I'm sure Lindsay, I'm sure these guys can explain more, but basically the big slide, some kids' rides, there are also supplementing some stuff like Bouncy, Bouncy House Nation last we knew. It's ever-evolving, but um...
Yeah.
Not, no Ferris wheel, no twister kind of thing.
Okay.
Scaled down carnival.
And then that's set to be on Sackett, because we thought it was gonna be on F?
A combination. There's gonna be some smaller rides on Sackett, but on the sweetie side of Sackett, and then on F is where the big slide. And these are ninety percent confirmed.
I got you.
A lot of it is once they get on site, but I think this carnival provider has it pretty dialed, knows what he did last year, knows what he has, and shows up and drops them and comes back and picks them up. So, yeah, the big slide on F, that's one of the reasons why when we did the F Street closure and we talked about what kind of permanent additions can go into the expansion, the business expansion, how far out they could go, knowing that the big side was gonna be there amongst some other things. But little kind of kid rides and one, like fun house?
We have a fun house in place of the Skull and Elders, and then we also are bringing in Bouncy Nation, which will be on Sackett Street.
So Bouncy Nation and...
Hamster Balls.
Hamster Balls.
Ball with entertainment.
Oh, nice.
How do I decide between Bouncy Nation or the hamster balls?
You don't have to, you can pick them both.
They think if we're trying to leave anything you have to pay additional for outside of the park for the days that the, that's taken in, so it's not an additional expense. So we are providing.
To repeat, anything they have to pay for will be outside of the fenced area where you have to pay for admissions is the attempt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I move to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Fontana. In the motion is to combine and approve the items on the consent agenda. Further discussion?
Stevens?
Oops.
You recused. Cretelli?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And that will take us to citizen comment, and this is an opportunity for council to hear from our community. Public will be limited to three minutes each during comments. There'll be a clock on the screen, and council may not respond to your comment this evening, rather we may take it, your comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions will be directed to the appropriate department for follow-up, and if necessary, the city administrator will correct the public record. And with that, Lindsay, you are up.
All right. We have our heavy council right now. Thank you for your recusal, Councilman Stevens. So we're up here for a reason that doesn't happen for y'all very often. We want to give a moment of gratitude. So we are headed into what is a pretty intense festival season. The country is kind of in a weird spot right now. We are feeling it within Fibark, but we have seen even throughout our city right now, a ton of support, a ton of personal support, a ton of financial support. And we really want to take this time to acknowledge our partnerships, and one of the largest and one of the biggest reasons we were able to come back after COVID and for the last five years the way we have, is the partnership with the city of Salida. So a lot of people don't really understand this partnership, but it is based in revenue share and a lot of fronted expenses by the city of Salida that Fibark would not be able to handle without this partnership. So through our ticket sales, which are the two days that you get in the park if your age is eighteen through sixty-four, a portion of that goes back into the city as well as a portion of the profits made to help sponsor the program. But in return, we receive a lot back from the city. It is truly a marriage that we do a big dance with, and a lot of the public doesn't understand that. And I can speak as the person that has been in this position somewhat for the last five years in some capacity. It wouldn't have come back post-COVID without the city's support. And we're able through that support to keep, I would say ninety percent of our services within this community, so we're able to give back. So think about the tents, the porta-potties, even our sponsors. We're ninety percent local sponsorship, and that's right now sitting at ninety grand in sponsorship, which is pretty cool. But we're able to keep that within this community because we're here for the same reason you all are. We believe in community. We believe in the people that live here year-round. We believe in these legacy events, so we wanted to stand up here and say thank you. We have a huge thank you to Diesel.
Yeah, Diesel.
To Maggie. To Ryan. Ryan from Parks and Rec is now also our paddle director on the volunteer side as well. That's awesome. That's such a marriage of community support. And also Nate, Saint Nate of the City does so much for us. Christie and Christie have walked me through some complicated scenarios, but it's been through creativity that we've been able to do this with this contract that I'm probably gonna sign in just a second, so... We're just honestly here to say thank you, because we don't. You normally hear from us, just like everyone else, when we're upset. And we just want to acknowledge that it wouldn't happen without the city, so thank you.
Thank you. Really nice to hear that. I don't see anyone else signed up. Do we have anyone online?
We have Adam Martinez online. Let me see if I'll be able to... Adam, you need to unmute if you'd like to speak.
Adam, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, okay. I am disappointed in the, or in not listening to the will of the people in Salida, so, and also closing the streets. This is not a pedestrian mall, and you... ...and people are wearing whole thing. In essence, and in essence, what purpose, what purpose are you doing it for? Except for the sales tax, of course, this council and this mayor doesn't want to accommodate the handicapped and the disabled. They don't want to accommodate people in wheelchairs. They don't want to accommodate the autism. They don't want to accommodate anybody, and it's just for, it's just for your guys' rich friends that in essence, and in essence, business owners are hurting. They are, they are suffering, and you don't delegate it from both sides of the aisle. You just look at it from one perspective, and it doesn't, and you guys treat us as if we're stupid. We're not, we're not stupid, and in essence, instead of communicating with the public, you, you guys need to be more transparent and in essence, more, and more thoughtful in your process, because what the, what the, what the, what the mayor said is, in essence, well, if the elderly don't like it, they could, they could just, in essence, stay home if, if they don't like it. And in essence, because it matters to the citizens of Salida that they have input, because, because that's the, that is the way democracy works, and that is, and in essence, and there's been a lot of lies that have been told regarding the street closures, and this is not a pedestrian mall. It will never be a pedestrian mall. And, and in essence, and stop saying it's a pedestrian mall, because it is not. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else online?
We don't.
Okay, then that will take us, we have a proclamation this evening, and that is celebrating May 2025 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian and Pacific Americans have played important and essential roles throughout American and Colorado history, and whereas Salida is committed to being a welcoming and inclusive place where all residents and visitors are safe to live, work, and play, and whereas Asians and Pacific Americans have endured and overcome hardship and heartache, contributing in great and significant ways to all aspects of society by creating works of literature and art, thriving as American athletes, prospering in the world of academia and entertainment, and contributing to American civil rights movements. And whereas Asian and Pacific Americans have played a vital role in our nation's economic and technological growth by establishing successful enterprises and pushing the limits of science and healthcare, and along with all of our great servicemen and women have defended the United States from threats at home and abroad, serving our nation with valor. And whereas during the Asian and Pacific American Heritage Month, we remember the challenges and celebrate the achievements that define our history. And now, therefore, the city of Salida does hereby proclaim and declare the month of May as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Salida, Colorado, and further encourages all Salidans to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And there is no unfinished business. There is one new business action item, and that is Resolution 2025-18, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving May 15th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the city of Salida. Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening, council. So the city of Salida is designated as a Tree City USA. A couple of things we have to do to get that recognition. We have to have a tree board, which we do. We have to have a community tree ordinance, which we do. We spend at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, and we celebrate Arbor Day annually. Because of Salida's climate, we don't celebrate Arbor Day on the traditional day in April. We shift it a little bit into May. So this May 15th at 1:30, there's going to be a special tree planting at Longfellow's fourth grade class. The tree is to be determined. They're still negotiating, but that is that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I have a slightly related question.
Sure.
What is a coffee tree? I mean, it doesn't grow coffee.
It grows coffee beans. So the little red seeds that you see, they grow about yay high. It's under a forestry canopy. And then you pick the fruit, which is red, and dry it, and it turns into the coffee bean, and then you roast it, and then you have a lovely cup of coffee.
But the coffee trees that grow here... But the coffee trees that grow here, they're not really coffee. They don't?
No, no, we're not the climate for coffee.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're not as tropical.
Something called a coffee tree that's not really coffee?
That's a great question. That is the extent of my knowledge. I, I ran with it as long as I could.
I would like to direct staff.
What else do you even know about trees, Sarah?
Ask you another tree question. I'll see what I can do.
Okay, thank you. Love that. That's what I saw.
Unless it's eaten by a specific animal.
I cannot wait to see how the Mountain Mail reports this tomorrow.
Get a tree expert next time for this sort of thing.
Sorry, guys.
Any other questions? And that will take us into discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the City of Salida.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Cretelli, seconded by Councilmember Pappenforth, and the motion is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Salida, Colorado, approving May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as Arbor Day in the City of Salida. Further discussion?
Pappenforth?
Yes.
Cretelli?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fontana?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and that brings us to council reports at the very late hour of six fifteen PM, and we will go ahead and start with Councilmember Stevens.
Um, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, Councilmember Fontana?
I have a couple things.
Yeah.
To report. Um, so first I wanted to say thank you to Bill. I'm just in the back. Nobody recognizes him. For, for the land use code update session a few weeks ago, I, I don't think I said it enough. I had a lot of people come in and talk to me about it and say it was very thorough. It was very informative. They appreciated it, and they, they're, they're encouraging you to have another one. Um, and, um, I just talked to Administrator Doon, and she said that to, the, the feedback for the land use code, to leave that on there would be possibly on the front page of the city website here soon. Um, so we'll look forward to that. So I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for that. Um, also thank you to the EDC for the update that they gave at, uh, the Chaffey County Fairgrounds a few, um, I think that was last week. Um, they, they're working really hard to promote, uh, businesses in our community, to promote small, medium, and large businesses, so, um, definitely, please shop, eat, and drink local. Um, let's see. Also, thank you to David Lady and his staff, along with Y and K Excavation. Um, their progress downtown. A lot of people are coming this week. Maybe not so much progress. I guess we'll see with the weather, but, um, to David Lady and Lauren and those guys that are working down there with Y and K, lots of positive feedback with that. Um, hopefully the weather doesn't set them back to back too far, um, and they are definitely wanna keep communication with updates going with that, and, um, we'll see if we can get some more updates on the progress of what's happening downtown. Um, the Salida Greater Recreation Board is meeting tonight, so I'm missing that meeting, so I'll have hopefully an update on that, um, next time, along with the Finance Committee. Um, lastly, I also went to Crime Stoppers, and they are in need of some fundraising help. So if anybody knows anybody to push towards Crime Stoppers, that would be great. Um, you can talk to Salida PD or the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, and they can direct you into the right spot, and that's all.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Pappenforth?
I don't have anything this evening.
And Councilmember Cretelli?
Well, first, I, I wanted to just, um, a couple of events attended, but the, um, volunteer appreciation at, uh, Fun Street, it was just awesome to see the number of volunteers that really helped, um, keeping program, uh, programming moving, um, and vibrant, and it was just cool to see them all in one space, um, just to see how many it takes just to, just to make things go. Um, and that enthusiasm was really awesome to see. Um, let's see, coming up, um, we've got some events, um, let's see, May fifteenth, Behavioral Health Coalition at noon. I believe that'll happen at the, I don't know if they've announced where that'll happen, but usually at the fairgrounds. But anyway, I think that's important, um, to find out where our gaps are in, um, that continuum of care that we talked a lot about, um, last night, as far as where those priorities are, what, um, what efforts are being made to achieve when it comes to transportation, or just other public programming in that way. Um, and, uh, yeah, just learning a lot from, from those sorts of things. Let's see. Um, also, attending, um, the, um, the roundtable, uh, Leadership Roundtable at the, uh, um, you know, Commissioners' Chambers, um, just really trying to get a sense of the effects of, um, a trade war and what, and how that affects things, uh, like small, our, our small businesses. Um, one thing that didn't come up that we forgot was how this will affect coffee, and coffee had just come up. Um, coffee does not get grown anywhere other than, um, outside of our country, um, so tariffs certainly to affect that. So, um, that, this is something to, you know, wrap our, our heads around and brace ourselves for the impacts of that. Um, one last thing, um, I saw a letter to the editor, um, from the owner of Shamrock Waste and Disposal. Um, I, I use, I use them. Um, I'm a, I'm a customer of theirs, so I was a little confused, um, about the strong opinions that somehow linked decisions that we make on the city level when it comes to scout waves, uh, surf waves, or metal rabbits, to the lack of a recycling center at the, um, at the landfill in the county. So I felt like that was an important distinction for like an owner of a big business locally to just know that, um, we can blame the rabbit for a lot of things, but like the lack of recycling center is probably not one of them. Um, and maybe we should, um, have like a public arts of like, uh, of a giant, like scapegoat, and then that could be the new thing that we blame everything on, um, globally. Um, you know, sky's the limit, and we can name the scapegoat, and it could be really fun. But, um, that's all I, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, and I just had a, a few things tonight. Um, since the last council meeting, I had a chance to finish three additional sessions at the high school with their American Government class, and, um, if any of you ever get an opportunity to go and speak to, whether it's high school or middle school or elementary, it's really rewarding, and I was really impressed with the level of engagement and the questions, and really, really enjoyed it. Um, I wanna thank Bill and the planning staff for the land use code update. I know it has been a monumental task, Herculean, some might call it, and just appreciate your persistence and getting us to where we are in the process, so thank you very much for that. Um, I also wanna thank, uh, Diesel and the parks for that great volunteer appreciation event at the arcade. I was really impressed. I appreciated the invitation, and it really speaks to how strong our community is, that we have so many people willing to pitch in and help out. I think that's what makes this community what it is, so thank you. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is, um, I had a chance to go to the reception at Council of the Arts last Thursday at the steam plant, and was just blown away by how much talent we have. I mean, walking around there, I felt like I was in the Louvre. It was really impressive to see, and it really speaks to how important the arts are to this community, so, uh, really appreciated that invitation. That's what I had tonight. Um, is Jeff on the line? Does he? Jeff, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here. Uh, I just have a couple of things real quickly. Uh, one, it's been a short meeting, uh, so I haven't had enough time to really determine what the deal is with a loaf of French bread in front of Councilmember Cretelli.
Inquiring minds want to know.
I don't know if there's enough time in the day, uh, but the other thing I wanna report is that I'm gonna be a grandfather, so there's big news.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm delighted. So, that's my report.
Thank you, Papa.
You know it. Grandpapa.
Um, our treasurer's not with us. I'm guessing there's?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ben?
Yeah, I'm here, but I don't have anything to report.
Nice to hear you.
Um.
And then, uh, department updates?
I just, I would like to give an update on F Street.
Yeah.
If I could, please. Uh, so obviously, the, the rain has caused some issues for construction. It hasn't caused any other issues, because my grass is looking good. It's not, not, uh, not being helped out. I know. Uh, okay, so obviously, recent rainfall has prevented the, um, asphalt tie-in work at Second and F to be completed. That was supposed to be done, um, I believe, last week. The saturated road base has to be dried before we can pave, and that's just a matter of construction and physics. So, um, the rain will probably push the reopening of Second and F back. Um, well, not probably, it has, as well as the planned closure of Third and F. If you recall, we do not wanna close Third and F until we can open Second and F to allow for circulation downtown, so unfortunately, the rain has affected two intersections. Um, we have adjusted the schedule, or Y and K has adjusted the schedule. Uh, we expect that we should be able to pave Second Street on Friday, May ninth, um, and then Third and F will start work on Monday, May twelfth. So that's the new plan, if, you know, it clears up, um, a little bit. To stay on track, contractors shifted, um, the focus, and they were completing the water service work between E and F on Second Street this week, which was originally planned for later in the summer, so we really do appreciate the fact that Y and K is keeping things moving, keeping their crews on site and getting work done that they can get done, even if it's a little bit off schedule uh, from what was originally planned. Um, we don't believe that there will be an overall delay to the schedule of the project. It's still, uh, the timeline still remains unchanged for the conclusion of the project. They're just shifting a few things around in the project. We, um, Sarah does a fabulous job communicating with businesses downtown, as does the contractor. Uh, we have staff on, uh, site downtown. David is always, uh, is walking around down there a lot, stopping in and talking to businesses, and I really appreciate that. They, the contractor will contact impacted buildings before any water service work begins, so businesses and residents downtown can expect to hear from the contractor if their waters service will be disrupted. If people have questions, please feel free to call City Hall, reach out to me, stop someone in a bright green Salida Work Fest downtown, and, um, we will be happy to share any and all information that we have with you. That is what I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. And it is six twenty-seven PM, and all that remains, I know this pains all of you, is a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.